Good evening and welcome to the January 24th work session of Mayor and City Council. We have one item for discussion tonight, and that is to receive a presentation from Montgomery Planning on the playing board draft quarter forward plan. Again, it's not rolling off the tongue, corridor forward. I'm telling you, try saying it like five times fast. Before we get into that, I want to announce that next week we will have a work session. It will be along with the Board of Supervisors of Elections, we will receive the participate in the city election debrief. So that will be Monday, January 31st, 7:30 PM. If you'd like to participate, as always, go to, on the Zoom, go to gatorsburgmd.gov/virtual and sign up. If not, you can watch us on YouTube or however you're streaming us currently. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob Robinson to lead us and introduce the topic.
Great, thank you, Mayor Ashman, and good evening, members of the council. I'm pleased that our friends from Montgomery Planning have joined us for our third work session on corridor forward. And for our first joining us this evening is Director of Planning Gwen Wright, and also Chair of the Planning Board, Mr. Casey Anderson. So this is a big deal for us. Montgomery Planning was kind enough to join us last July to begin talking about corridor forward and what the process was going in. They then came back in September prior to entering the Planning Board public hearing process to sort of go through the preliminary recommendations. Well, the Planning Board actually approved their draft December 23rd of this year, and it was released for public consumption and transmitted to the council in early January. The county council will be conducting their public hearing on the corridor forward plan on February 15th of this year. So we asked Montgomery Planning to come join us again to sort of present the planning board draft. And you know, that's one of the things, the other purpose of tonight's work session is heading into the county council hearing process should our council wish to offer any comments as it goes through that process. Staff seeking guidance this evening on what they would like included. So you can see a lot of our compatriots have joined us this evening. So with that, I will turn it over to everyone wants to kick it off from the Montgomery Planning side.
Hi, this is Casey Anderson, Chair of the Montgomery Planning Board. I want to thank the council and the city of Gathersburg for inviting us to present and for your collaboration with our team. I won't say much because I want to get out of the way and get into the substance of this presentation, but I would just say that there, we never expected the Managed Lanes project to be proposed just as we were, had started thinking about the idea that evaluating the different alternatives for transit in the I-270 corridor would really be a good idea for entirely separate reasons. But in light of the Managed Lanes project, this gives us an opportunity to frame some issues for discussion about what the county wants to try to get out of the Managed Lanes project in terms of a contribution to transit projects. And so I think this couldn't have happened at a better time. Obviously, a lot has changed since the Great Seneca Science Corridor Plan was adopted over a decade ago. Some of the real estate development activities that were anticipated when that plan was adopted have not materialized in the way that was expected when that plan was drafted. And so I think that reevaluating and reimagining some of the way that CCT will work in conjunction, not only with that plan, but in how that fits in with Gathersburg's needs and the rest of the county's needs up and down the I-270 corridor is a really important objective and I think benefit of looking at this. And I, I think you'll find that while our proposals make some modifications that I'm sure will cause a little bit of discombobulation from people who have really made some assumptions about what the CCT would look like, I think it offers some really significant benefits and opportunities, especially for Gathersburg and Montgomery Village in particular. The other piece of this that I think is really, is going to, you're going to want to spend some time really thinking about is what our team has concluded about the relative merits of trying to make dramatic improvements in mark service versus a new red line extension over the long term. And again, I think there are obviously some trade offs involved in any decision to go forward with a major new transit project that hadn't previously been contemplated, but I think you'll find that there are also some really exciting opportunities that that opens up. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gwen Wright, and we really welcome your interest and your questions and sincerely hope that you'll comment to the council and continue to work with us as this moves through the process over the next couple of months.
And I think Casey did a great introduction, and I think we're ready to really launch into the presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Sanders, who is Chief of our Mid-County Planning Team.
Thank you, Gwen. Carrie Sanders, Chief of Mid-County Planning, really happy to be back with you and really appreciate the engagement of the mayor and council and the Gathersburg staff. This is our third presentation to you, and I wanted you to know that this draft actually incorporates several, several of the revisions based on the feedback we've received from your staff, and I think that has been really helpful for us throughout the process. I think just wanted to make a few key points before we get into detail. One of the things that we have really heard from the public as we've worked on this plan is they really feel that people in this corridor do not have choices of how they travel much of the I-270 corridor. So example, today, on average, the main centers of activities are roughly seven times more accessible by vehicles than transit, and that's measured by a 45-minute commute trip. So we really hoped in this plan to prioritize transit and also provide a very clear list that can be used to turn this around and really invest in our transit and provide choices. The other thing we have heard through the process is that promises have been made to implement transit, and it's important to follow through on those promises. And we actually feel that this plan can deliver the implementation of promise, implementation of projects that actually does follow up on those promises. So we actually, through this process, you know, found that the corridor cities transit way has had some very good work done on it, and a lot of important aspects of that transit way are retained through our proposals, but we are recommending in this plan a revisioning of that, of that transit way, and that recommends a more buildable, efficient alignment of the transit way that strengthens the county's economic competitiveness. It also, you'll find as we get into the detail, we are looking at removing two overpasses over I-270 that make that project very costly. And, and the other thing that I really wanted to highlight in this presentation is that our re-envisioned CCT connects to Montgomery Village and also Lake Forest Mall and brings those communities closer to the job centers and the other communities along I-270. So we're going to go into more detail toward the end about that, but I just wanted to highlight it that upfront. And then thirdly, this plan prior, plans prioritize, excuse me, this plan priorities are also focused on not only what is achievable today, but also what's possible in the future. So you'll see that the top priority projects are the Maryland 355 Transit and the Veers Mill Bus Rapid Transit, and that is followed by the corridor connectors, which is the re-envisioned CCT. So we really feel these projects are actually very achievable today and think that they should be done quickly. We also are looking at these long-term projects as well, and you'll find as we get through our presentation that the long-term pursuit of a red line extension is also very advantageous. It connects the mid-county and the up-county to sort of the wider region and also communities along I-270, and it supports the compact development that the county has done for many, many years. And lastly, reduces vehicle miles traveled. So I wanted to kind of hit on those few key points that I think were really helpful for framing the presentation tonight. And I'm sure you have lots of questions. So I'm now going to turn it over to our project team, specifically Patrick Reed, to go over the recommendations in more detail and talk about how they specifically relate to the city of Gathersburg.
It's Carrie, Patrick Reed, a Mid-County Transportation Planner. Can everybody hear me okay? Thumbs up. Perfect. Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all tonight, and if you could call up the packet, that would be excellent. And you can proceed to the next page, please. Thank you. So tonight, we wanted to go through a couple of different things. We know we've, we've had some collaboration with Gathersburg along the way, which has been excellent. However, if there's folks watching at home, we did want to kind of give a quick overview of the planning process just to bring everybody up to speed. If folks are at different places, talk a little bit about the plan, purpose and context, particularly the context with Managed Lanes and now renamed Op Lanes Project. And then focus the meat of the presentation on Gathersburg focus recommendations. We'll provide a little bit of an overview of the recommendations generally, and then talk about specific ones that we heard some feedback from Gathersburg staff on and sort of how we address those comments along the way. Next slide please. Next slide, please. Thank you. We start every presentation with a slide. It's just sort of a reminder to folks about what a master plan and a functional plan, what they are, what they do, and what they do not do. We are a planning agency. Unfortunately, we're not an implementation agency. So anything that's documented inside this plan, it gets picked up as a recommendation potentially by others. It has to be moved along by other parties, right? But what our document is in a function plan is a statement of intent about what we think is advantageous for the county and the municipalities within the county. I mean, in order to move a recommendation forward, sort of a large significant capital project like a red line extension or monorail, things like that. Those would go through the NEPA process typically, and some of our more smaller bus projects might be advanced through facility planning, but those are separate actions that happen outside of the planning process. So really, we're here at step one. Everything that would follow in the future years to advance one of the projects from quarter forward would be led by either MTA or MCDOT, potentially Metro, other parties. Next slide, please. So in terms of how we developed the plan, what, what was the process? How did we get to where we are today? Well, the first phase back in the fall of 2020, which feels like some, some, quite a long time ago, we scoped this project and we realized that, you know, we needed to think about all of the existing master plan options that exist today and as well as all the options that are not master planned, but in the public sphere to kind of get a better understanding of what's out there rather than start from scratch, because we have a lot on the books today and others have done quite a bit of work on their own. Our transit advocates, for example, the High Road Foundation is one that folks are aware of. They've done a lot in terms of studying potential options. So we put all of these different options together in a menu, and we developed an evaluation methodology and criteria to whittle that down to six key options that we would advance to more robust study. Our second phase was to evaluate and prioritize these six key options. We did that using the lens of our general plan, thinking about equity, the economy and economic health, as well as environmental resilience. We also took into account some implementation considerations as well as some financial considerations. Phase three was to solicit feedback and solidify priorities, and that happened in the summer of 2021. And then phase four was to work on the plan and then start to think about how some of the recommendations within the plan, what, what sort of actions would need to be true for these recommended transit projects to advance. The last phase is phase, phase five, planning board and council review, which is where we are today. Next slide, please. What's encompassed in phase five for planning board and council review? Well, first, we brought preliminary recommendations to the planning board in October of 2021. I think we met with you all sometime around that timeframe, got some feedback as well from city staff. We developed the working draft in November of 2021. There was a public hearing held where people from the county as well as, we actually received some testimony exterior, exterior from the county as well, commenting on the plan's recommendations, made revisions at the guidance of the planning board, and the planning board approved the draft, which turned into the planning board draft, and that was transmitted on January 7th. That means that now council will begin its review. So county council set the public hearing for February 15th in a couple of weeks. Next slide, please. And now we'll move into sort of the purpose of the plan and some context. So next slide, please. So pardon me, as sort of a recap, the, the major statement that kind of introduces the plan, right, is that there are many different master planned and hypothetical transit options that could improve accessibility along the I-270 corridor, but we didn't at the, at the start of the project, there wasn't like a clear strategy about which projects made the most sense to advance and how resources should be directed and how resources should be directed to projects that are advantageous and where we could get the best bang for our buck and where we should think about, you know, thinking big and kind of having a strategy that's a long-term strategy. So we sort of just had a bunch of nebulous options floating out there. And so what this project did is consistent with the direction of the values of Thrive Montgomery. We wanted to prioritize different options that were out there in the public sphere. Next slide, please. And this, this all happened in the context of the Managed Lanes project as the playing board chair mentioned at the beginning of the project. You know, initially, this was sort of a separate effort, right? Slightly linked to the highway project, but not a state-run effort, not a project that is looking at widening the highways. We're not doing that. We're only looking at transit within the planning, the planning's charge here. However, as our project moved forward, I think many seem to, to find it as a, a good opportunity to kind of think about how we could use any kind of funding that could be committed from the state, from the tolling revenue that could be generated to support transit. And so you see here that in the transportation planning board's resolution, which looked at the air quality assessment and whether or not the highway widening should be added to the air quality assessment, they came to an agreement that there would be $30 million from any kind of managed lanes or op lanes project committed to design for, for transit and 300 million committed to construction. This is a great first step, right, in terms of moving a project forward. It's also important to note that 360 million couldn't cover any of the projects that we looked at in the, in this effort alone. And so, you know, you need things like federal grants to, to advance projects forward. However, it's a great first step to start thinking about what's most important to us. And as you heard earlier at the beginning of the opening comments, this plan posits, it's really the 355 BRT and the Veers Mill BRT. Corridor Forward is, was a separate county functional master plan independent of state highway expansions. And, you know, it does demonstrate and prioritize transit options from a wider menu of possibilities. However, at the council hearing on the 15th, per the direction of and decision of county council, they wanted to use that time to kind of take feedback, not only on the plan itself and the language in the plan, but also here the public's preferences for the use of op lanes funding, any kind of funding that's committed from the state's efforts. So you know, just keep that in mind as you're providing testimony to council. Obviously, we want to hear your feedback on the plan, but also this is a great opportunity too for the city of Gathersburg to kind of comment to county council about where funding could, could go to support projects in the county and Gathersburg small. Next slide, please. Now we'll dive into some Gathersburg focus recommendations after a quick overview of the plan recommendations. Next slide, please. So, and pardon me, dealing with a little cold here. In terms of overall commute patterns, we started by kind of looking at where Montgomery County residents work and where they live. And you can see that the majority of Montgomery County residents work in Montgomery County, or I should say, the greatest portion regionally where Montgomery County residents work is within the county itself, but also share, significant share going into the District Columbia every morning. And our employees, you know, who, people who work here, there's a large percentage of people who work here who actually live here as well. And so that kind of is important to keep in mind because there was an initial thought at the scope of the project that we would look at the corridor as a whole from Frederick all the way down to Tysons. And the travel demand pattern suggests that yes, there are some people who are making longer commute trips, but some of the best benefits that we can get are actually thinking about what we can do internal to the county as well. Next slide, please. And so you can see here, for example, one, only 1% of Fairfax County employees come all the way from Frederick. So you don't have people up in Frederick who are jumping on the highway and then rolling all the way down to Tysons every morning. So it's, it's one of those things where it's important to kind of keep that in context. It makes sense to not only shore up long-distance trips, but also think about what are the other trip patterns that we need to make. The other thing to think about too is that different transit modes serve different purposes. Something like commuter rail, like our existing mark service serves those long-distance trips. Typically, you see commuter rail with lower, lower numbers of accessibility. And by that, I mean fewer number of stations, longer distance spans between stations. And then on the other end of the spectrum, local bus, you know, you have a ride-on bus, for example. It has a significant number of stops. It's a little less efficient than sort of a straighter service like commuter rail. And then there are things in the middle like our metro rail subway and our BRT. And that kind of became the focus of this project is thinking about how our BRT network works and how it can really do a great job of solidifying and serving mobility needs in the mid-county and up-county region. We also looked at metro rail too as a great option that links into the most important employment center in the region at this time, which is Washington DC. Next slide, please. So the plan recommendations, as was mentioned earlier, there are three big priorities, right? The first priorities are the 355 and Veers Mill BRTs. You can see them in the graphic on the right-hand side of your screen. It's sort of that green. We've combined them to kind of just delineate what's existing in terms of what's existing as what's master planned today. And then our second priority, which is shown in light blue, is a near-term, or there's near-term corridor connectors. These are the re-envisioning of the CCT, right? There are a series of dedicated bus lanes that facilitate access to the 355 corridor and other BRT links as well to kind of make the best use of our infrastructure and open up possibilities for one-seat rides, not only on the 355 corridor, but also other places as well, like within the Great Seneca vicinity in Montgomery Village. And we'll talk a little bit more about that minute. Our third priority is a long-term red line extension. In terms of the supporting recommendations, we have some that are very relevant to the city of Gathersburg, including support for the Great Seneca Transit Network. We did receive comments on that from the city staff, and it was a great addition to, to kind of talk about how, how we could support that effort that MCDOT is working on, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of minutes here. There's a recommendation to continue state-provided commuter bus service using the proposed corridor connectors. And then where beneficial or necessary, a recommendation to acknowledge that at times, you know, if we can't have everything right away, it's a good idea to start moving the ball forward and not just wait for something, you know, for the ideal funding opportunity to fall in our laps, but some of these quarter connectors and bus links and even the GST network are things we can slowly advance over time, while at the same time not sacrificing that larger vision, right? Some of these components have independent utility and they can only be improved by having greater access to like the whole vision in total. There are some city-relevant existing recommendations that are retained. And by retained, I mean, these are recommendations that already exist in other master plans. So there's support for additional mark rail right-of-way for additional mainline track. We already have that in our master plans and several of our master plans today, as well as our functional transit quarters. I'm going to get the name wrong, countywide transit quarters functional master plan, which is a 2013 transit plan for the county. Basically, what this recommendation does is it, it means that we'll continue to take in the right-of-way as it becomes available through the development process to support mark expansion. We also support master plan mark stations in this plan. So those are those two stations that we'd like to see at Shady Grove and White Flint. And there's also a desire to explore a more direct Frederick and Germantown connection. Next slide, please. There are six recommended connectors. So when, when we talked about the quarter connectors, again, it's these elements that you see in blue here, and it's the second priority in the plan after the 355 and Veers Mill BRT. So why did we go that route and what are they? Well, again, it's sort of a re-envisioning of the CCT, and we'll show you similarities and differences to the CCT in a moment. But for the purposes of explanation, we've split these into sort of sub-priorities. You see segment A, which is labeled at the bottom of the map there. It's a segment that connects the 355 corridor to the Life Sciences Center. And then high, the higher priority B is the Germantown Connector. So this is a segment that connects the mark rail up in Germantown to other points of demand along MD-118, including the Transit Center, the College and the 355 corridor. The middle priorities for the corridor connectors are the Lake Forest, Montgomery Village connector. This is C, what you see on the map here. It extends from Montgomery Village, basically the park and ride on 124 past Lake Forest Mall and the Great Seneca Connector, which is D, which kind of functions as a link between the other connectors. And then the lower priorities are different dedicated bus lanes that, that were envisioned to serve up county. One of the communities exists today, Mankin West Connector, that serves that Black Hills community that up in Clarksburg has been moving forward. And then F is sort of the larger vision for access through the concept property in the future, either via observation drive or gateway drive. Next slide, please. So what are these corridor connectors? Well, as I mentioned, they're segments of dedicated bus lanes. And what they do is they offer the opportunity to think about a one-seat ride between places of high demand. So for example, one that I think is really easy to communicate, you can kind of see on the map here, see that point in blue where Kentlands is in Gathersburg. Imagine a one-seat ride between Kentlands and then points in further south in Rockville. So you can envision a service pattern that has a bus running from Kentlands past Rockville to Point South. You can even envision one that connects Kentlands all the way down to Wheaton via the dedicated bus lane infrastructure for the 355, for the Veers Mill BRT. So the idea here is to think about as we bring online more and more infrastructure for the 355 and Veers Mill BRT, how can we kind of multipurpose that infrastructure to be advantageous to other communities as well, like Gathersburg? It's not a single branded BRT service, so it's a little bit different than the CCT in that regard. You know, most people are familiar with the CCT. They think of one bus route. Well, what we're doing here is showing you there's infrastructure that could be used to provide multiple routes and advantages for, for multiple routes. What do they offer? They could be developed incrementally and integrate well with other dedicated bus lane infrastructure. As I mentioned, they offer multiple service patterns for different routes. And they do have some advantages for regional travel as well, the state commuter bus level. You can think about a bus that's on I-270 getting off the highway and then diverting into one of these quarter connectors to easily access a pointed demand, and we'll, we'll show you some diagrams of how that could work in a couple of minutes here. Next slide, please. They do provide service to many CCT communities as well, which I think is something we wanted to kind of emphasize. About 43% of the same guideway infrastructures, the CCT is covered by the quarters, quarter connectors. And you can see this on the map on the right-hand side of the screen here. The white line is the former CCT. And the blue line is, are the quarter connector. So you can see where they're next to each other. It's basically the, the same, the same infrastructure was being proposed to be used. So you know, the concept plans that were done previously for the CCT phase one, there's still a lot of value in those because a lot of what is, has been kind of conceptually designed already could be retained through a proposal. Now, what's different? Well, A, there, the Dorsey Mill interchange up here, which is originally envisioned to be a transit-only interchange, that is no longer necessary. Now, we're not removing it from our master plan or our functional master plan of highways, but we're saying for, for the purpose of transit services, in order to advance quarter connectors, you don't necessarily need it, which makes these a little bit more buildable, less expensive. B, where you see B on the map there, that's a large chunk of the CCT that provided no access, right? By no access, I mean there's no stations along the way. Whereas if you flip to the other side of the highway where 355 is, there are a number of different stations along that segment. Some of them, as you get further south in Gathersburg, which essentially what you're saying here is why do we want to provide a bunch of infrastructure that could cost, have some costs associated with it? When on the other side of the highway, we have infrastructure that's more valuable because it's actually providing access to people. And so that's the rationale for moving away from that chunk, that segment of chunk, chunked infrastructure in B. And then C, that's the location of the Redland Road Fields Overpass, which provided access between King Farm and Crown Farm. Now, you know, moving away from service in King Farm and Crown Farm, I want to be clear that that is, you know, the previous planning and transit planning that's done there is not totally lost because our partners over at MCDOT are planning quite a bit of service in this area through their Great Seneca Transit Network. So next slide, talk about that here. So in terms of supporting the Great Seneca Transit Network, if you're not familiar with it, what this is, it's a series of bus lines serving Rockville, Gathersburg and the Great Seneca area that provide access mostly between Shady Grove and universities at Shady Grove to different points in that vicinity, but there's also some lines that go out to Kentlands as well. There, this, this is sort of a, a network of not solely buses that run in dedicated lanes, although there are some dedicated lanes, but also some things like transit signal priority, which means when a bus approaches a, a stoplight, it has the ability to kind of communicate with a stoplight and keep it green so it can keep moving. Cue jumps where it can kind of navigate around traffic to, to jump to the front of the line and then express bus lane. So places where, you know, for short segments, the bus can jump into express lane to, to keep it moving quickly. It's a really important service. We're excited to, to kind of advocate for it in this plan. And we've added this recommendation that you see here based on the guidance that we received from Montgomery County Department of Transportation, but also city of Gathersburg staff, which we really appreciated. Next slide, please. You can see, pardon me, you can see on this map on the right-hand side of the screen where you see a black dash line. That's, that's one of the routes for the Great Seneca Network. We've had a lot of issues communicating visual diagrams, so we decided to forego the color here. We're still going back and forth about whether or not that makes sense. But each of these has a different color route, right? So there's a lime route. So there's a lime route, pink route, cobalt route, I believe a gray route as well. And what they do is, you know, they have these lines that connect Shady Grove in various ways to the university. Universities at Shady Grove, so it's more of a hub-and-spoke system than what was originally envisioned for the CCT. See, but but I think it's an advantageous system because the county of transportation really spent a lot of time thinking about. Where the main points of demand exist today in the Great Seneca area and how they could be best served. There is some synergy with what we're proposing with our quarter connectors. You can see on the lime route, which is partially within Gaithersburg. I know it's not shown as lime here or green here on the map. But this is a a line that basically runs. Through Crown and MCDOT is proposing dedicated lanes for Fields Road. We're also noting here that if you have the right-of-way, you could consider working with MCDOT to to request or ask for additional dedicated lanes and to Cooverly as well. The pink route, partially within Gaithersburg, has potential synergy with our Life Sciences Connector. If the alternate route in the plan is provided on MD-28, so that's that's Key West Avenue. Essentially, you can see that what they're proposing for a route is overlapping where we think dedicated bus lane should be. And the same is true with this Cobalt Route, which is partially within Rockville. There's a section of their proposal that that goes on Guti Drive and we're proposing dedicated lanes on Guti Drive as well. So there's a lot of synergy with with what these two different plans are doing. Next slide, please. And I should mention too, I apologize, they have a great story map on their website. And I don't know if we're able to put anything in the chat here, but we can certainly share it with city staff. And city, city council, as well as mayor's office as well, if you're interested and you haven't seen it yet. My best sense is that you probably have, but it provides a lot of great information about what MCDOT is working on. Some other transit services that the plan supports, as I mentioned previously. This this thought that we could maximize the potential of the managed lanes or now called op lanes. The thought here is that, you know, commuter bus is something that exists today, right? The state runs commuter bus service and we don't necessarily want to say it's a. While it is an important service, it's not a new game for the county, so that's why it's not in our prioritization scheme. So we've clearly kind of worded this recommendation, say, this is an important service, please continue to provide state commuter, state-provided commuter bus service on I-270. But as you're thinking about service planning in the future, make use of our quarter connectors and our our dedicated bus lanes as you move a bus off the highway. To access our population employment centers. And that will make these commuter bus services more advantageous for folks who are coming from points north or south to access the county. Next slide, please. It's just a graphic example of how you could do that. So you can see that dash line coming down on I-270 here. And what what happens here is the bus, the commuter bus gets off at the proposed Opland's interchange for Guti Drive. And continues over in the quarter connectors to the Life Sciences Center. So that gives sort of a good access to one of our major employment centers in the county. It's one option that could be considered. Next slide, please. And another option that could be considered is is a connection starting in Montgomery Village that passes Lake Forest Mall and Lake Forest Transit Center. And then jumps on the highway to go to go to Point South in Northern Virginia. And this sort of concept, while not exactly the same, something very similar was looked at. In a joint study between the Maryland Transit Administration and Virginia's Department of Rail and Public Transportation. So there's a lot of heft behind this idea that we could we could really maximize commuter bus service. And thinking about ways at the local on the local side, when the bus gets off the highway, how we can support that service is it's probably a good thing. Next slide, please. In terms of relation to other transit services, we also wanted to talk about the CCT funding commitments and and right-of-way. We did receive some feedback that we need to be more clear about what we're how we're treating funding that was previously committed. To the quarter cities transit way, and so there's a comment in the plan now that that basically directly says, you know, if if any funding is committed for to the CCT. It should be shifted over to advance the quarter connectors. And previously dedicated rights-of-way and recorded easements. The plan does not propose letting go of these because they still have value for things like that Great Seneca Transit Network or. No transit, I'm sorry, our pedestrian and bicycle facilities or transit facilities that are just local bus services. You know, local bus services as well could benefit from things like extra space for key jumps and whatnot. And so the thought is to retain these. Next slide, please. Quick points about some other testimony that we received from Gaithersburg staff before we jump into the discussion of the red line extension and mark rail. There was a request to clearly state the plan's priorities, which makes a lot of sense. We added this upfront to the plan's abstract, so the first priority, again, it's the 355 BRT and Viers Mill BRT. Second priority, quarter connectors that re-envisioning with the CCT and that third priority is the red line extension. Clearly defined what near term and long term was a request we heard from city staff. And so we do that now, sort of this line that that notes, you know, our our functional plans typically have a horizon, an outlook of twenty-five years or so. But most of them note that some of these projects are going to take a little bit longer than how to move forward. Particularly the red line extension would be something that, you know, it could move forward in twenty-five years, but more likely than not, it would have to be championed. And it'd involve quite a quite a high degree of study to to kind of move a project of that heft forward. There's a request to acknowledge municipal authority and limits of planning of the plan's jurisdiction. We had this prior to this request, but we tried to put it in as many locations as we thought was appropriate. So we did add a couple of different references to municipal authority for Rockville and Gaithersburg elsewhere in the plan. Next slide, please. We did clarify that the CCT is reimagined as the quarter connectors. And while these are sort of a collection of dedicated bus lanes, it it shouldn't be minimized that. Each has independent utility as they kind of connect to that larger BRT network for 355 and Viers Mill. And so again, it opens up that possibility to to think about a one-seat ride between Montgomery Village and Point South. Say in Wheaton, or for example, the Life Sciences Center and Points in Wheaton. Or Montgomery Village and Points in Clarksburg or Gaithersburg and Points in Clarksburg. The idea here is to to kind of put something together that could be flexible and could be responsive to demand patterns as they sort of evolve. With growth over the the lifespan of the plan. There was a request to clearly acknowledge the red line constraints. I'm smiling because I I I want to acknowledge that each of the options that we looked at with that more robust study. Has significant constraints, right? Any ma- major transportation project has a number of constraints, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't if. It doesn't mean we shouldn't advance these and pursue them if they prove to have a significant degree of value. We did address challenges and constraints associated with the red line and they're documented in the plan. Probably in greater detail than any other option. And I they will, I do want to be clear that just because an option was not recommended and the constraints are not discussed does not mean they do not exist. It it is the case that each of these will be challenging, but also offer great benefit benefit as well. There was a request to revise the recommendation to eliminate roadway capital improvement plan projects. You know, I think this this recommendation, it got quite a bit of massaging. The idea was to initially think about how we could make transit more competitive with driving. And so, you know, acknowledging that the initial language was a little bit restrictive. We revised it to to kind of say the provision of dedicated transit lanes should be prioritized over auto-capacity to maximize person throughput. And improve the relative travel time competitiveness and convenience of transit. The thought here is that if transit is not competitive from a travel time perspective. It's just not going to be as desirable and fewer people are going to want to use it. And so in order to maximize the benefits of of infrastructure that we're providing, we have to think about ways that we can, we can really make them competitive. Next slide, please. And so I think this is a good point to shift over to my colleague Jesse, who's going to talk a little bit about the long-term red line extension. And a little bit about Mark Rail as well.
Thanks, Patrick. This is Jessie Cohn McGowan, I'm in the countywide planning and policy division at the planning department. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the red line. So first, I'm going to talk a little bit about why this is our recommended long-term vision for the I-270 corridor. In our analysis, the red line really rose to the top across a lot of our different metrics. So we found that this was the best option when it came to thinking about the environment and vehicle miles traveled. So each day, an extension of the red line could result in one hundred and sixty thousand miles off of our roadways. And and for comparison, the purple line is expected to reduce VMT in the in Prince George's and Montgomery County by about one hundred thirty thousand miles. So this investment would be really significant in in how we're reducing VMT. The red line extension was also the best option to reduce transit travel times. So for people who are currently taking transit today, this would have a great benefit to them. If you currently go from Germantown to Bethesda or Gaithersburg to Bethesda. Your transit trip would be reduced by thirteen minutes or nine minutes respectively. So thinking about specifically Gaithersburg, you know, commuters traveling from Gaithersburg to Bethesda would almost have a ten-minute shorter transit commute than they do today. We also found that this was the best option to add riders to the transit network. So some of the options we found would shift people from local bus, maybe to Mark, to the BRT, et cetera. And while while some people who would use the red line extension would be shifting from other modes. This also had the greatest benefit to really get people out of their cars and taking transit. This also, the red line extension or thinking about Metro Rail is a proven mode to drive development patterns. So so the addition of a new metro station is expected to result in transit-oriented development. And additional employment and housing along the the extension. But we know that every every project, you know, has implementation challenges and the red line is no exception. My colleague Patrick was just talking about how we've addressed some of those challenges in the plan, so we know that there are extensive capital costs to the project. We would need to consider right-of-way acquisition and of course cooperation with CSX and Wamata. And so before I jump to the next slide, the next few slides are going to be comparing. The the analysis of the red line extension to improvements to Mark Rail. We received several comments from members of the public, as well as some feedback from the staff at the city of Gaithersburg. About why we were prioritizing the red line when Mark is something that already runs through your community. And so I just want to quickly define how we looked at Mark Rail as well as how we looked at the red line. So given that I was just talking about the red line to start, so the red line extension is an eight-mile extension north from Shady Grove to Germantown. It generally runs along the CSX tracks and would have three new stops, one in Old Town Gaithersburg. One at Maryland 124 and then one in Germantown Town Center. And the train would run as frequently as the red line runs today. So during the peak period, it would come every six minutes. And then in the off-peak, it would come every twelve minutes. By comparison, the way that we defined enhanced Mark Rail was really increasing the service of of service along the Brunswick Line. So increasing that to fifteen-minute headways in in Gaithersburg and most of the the stations south of Gaithersburg. During the peak periods and. And adding bidirectional service, so right now the train only runs in the peak direction. So that would be south in the morning and north in the afternoon. But this would introduce bidirectional service as well as introduce midday service. So now I can go ahead to the next slide, please. So keeping that in mind, I'm going to share our comparison of the analysis results. First, in the top left, we looked at changes to daily ridership across the two modes. And we found that the red line extension was expected to have about twice as many new riders. Twenty thousand new riders to the red line. So as I had mentioned on the previous slide, some of these shift from different modes, whereas some are new to transit. So we saw that for Mark, about eight thousand passengers would be transferring from other modes. And and for the red line, we'd see about twelve thousand new riders, or sorry, twelve thousand riders switching from a new. From other modes and about eighty-three hundred transit riders new that are new. We did look at the costs of each of these options and while the the price tag for the red line extension does exceed. That for enhanced Mark Rail, when we look at the outcomes of these different metrics. We see that the cost per rider is really higher for enhanced Mark Rail, even though the price tag is lower. So the cost per rider for Mark Rail is twenty-four percent higher than it is for a red line extension. We also looked at the three stations that would run through the the red line extension and how ridership at those stations would compare relative to enhanced Mark Rail. And so in the lighter orange on the right, you see Mark in the future without any improvements. In the darker orange, you see enhanced Mark Rail. And then you can see the red for the red line extension and you can see that at Old Town Gaithersburg and Metropolitan Grove, a really significant increase. Or not increase, because there isn't that service today, but a really high ridership. For each of those stations relative to what you would see with Mark, even with those improvements and additional frequency. So next slide, please. We also considered land use as part of this analysis. So on this chart, you can see the population and employment density for the stations of both the Metro Rail red line as well as Mark. Within Montgomery County. And so here, we're just kind of clipping to look at Montgomery County. So for the red line, you just have stations on the western leg from Bethesda up to Shady Grove. And then for Mark, looking at the stations along the Brunswick Line. And so here we see that when we look at population and employment, both today and in the future. The the density is much higher along the red line station. So there's more potential for ridership and also it's the stations are in the locations that we're anticipating growth in the future. So next slide, please. We also, I kind of mentioned the frequency in my initial introduction of the two different routes. But you can see that the frequency of the red line extension far exceeds that of enhanced Mark Rail. And that's probably why we are seeing additional right, more riders to the red line extension than we are to Mark. On the bottom left here, we did look at job accessibility as one of our metrics. So for this, we're saying. If you were to take Mark from your home or you were to take the red line for forty-five minutes. Or, you know, maybe maybe your your route includes Mark and then bus or red line and then bus. How many jobs could you reach within forty-five minutes? And so by improving Mark Rail, we see a pretty marginal increase in the jobs accessible. But we see a pretty dramatic increase for the red line extension. And that's because many riders would have a one-seat ride to portions of Washington DC that they currently don't have. Sorry, I have a cough as well today. Equity was also part of our analysis here, and so you can see in the hatched portions of this chart. That the equity benefits of the red line extension are also quite large. So for each resident of an equity focus area within the county, the job accessibility or the number of jobs that they can reach. Within forty-five minutes would increase by over fifteen thousand jobs. So really broadening the economic opportunity of those living in the equity focus areas. In the top right, we have the daily VMT reduction. I already mentioned the value of almost one hundred sixty thousand miles for the red line extension for enhanced Mark Rail. We would see seventy-three thousand miles. And again, we we did a comparison between these two to see kind of where do you get your bang for your buck or or where are we seeing? If we compare these, kind of what's the benefit between the two? And so we did see that the VMT reduction in equity focus areas was almost four hundred percent higher for the red line extension than enhanced Mark Rail. And in addition, the cost for every vehicle, vehicle mile taken off the road. Is almost sixty percent higher for enhanced Mark Rails than the than the red line extension. So, you know, on the next slide, I'm about to talk about some of the implement implementation challenges of both of these options. But when we look at the real benefits of each of them, we see that the red line kind of exceeds. The benefits of enhanced Mark Rail across the board. So you can go to the next slide, please. So here we talk a little bit about implementation. I do want to kind of focus on this first line for a minute, the distance of the guideway. One of the reasons that we're recommending the red line extension as a priority. Over the enhanced Mark Rail is that it is an eight-mile improvement relative to requiring forty-five miles of new track. That would be required for the enhanced Mark Rail. So then we have a variety of different metrics on this slide. I'm not going to walk through each of them, but acknowledging, you know, what are some of the implementation challenges when we think about the footprint of these projects? The additional right-of-way that would be needed, et cetera. I do want to acknowledge that if you look at the fourth row here, anticipated impacts to structures. While overall, we are seeing that enhanced Mark Rail has far more structures impacted than the red line extension. The impacts in Gaithersburg are greater for the red line extension than they are for for enhanced Mark Rail. And so we understand that, you know, while we may be looking at this at the county-wide scale, you may be focusing in a bit more on what what does this mean for Gaithersburg? And so while this may be a bit alarming, I do want to call out that, you know, this is an initial planning study. And the work that we've done so far is a high-level desktop analysis. And so we do anticipate that kind of further planning and design would would reduce these impacts by identifying ways to avoid. You know, structures, grade crossings, et cetera. So you can go to the next slide, please. So next, I'm going to shift to talking about a few additional comments that we received from city staff and addressing. Lake Forest, Lake Forest Mall and Montgomery Village and Metropolitan Grove. So first, there was a request that we acknowledged the Lake Forest master plan, so we've now included included that. In the master plan on page forty-one of the planning board draft. Unfortunately, I don't know off the top of my head what page that is in your packet, but we can, I can get that to you. We also received some comments about why we were putting the corridor connector on Maryland 124 rather than Watkins Mill. Given that Metropolitan Grove could Given that Metropolitan Grove could potentially be expanded with operations and maintenance facility and and kind of considering the geometry of this location. And so one change that we've made was that the plan does recommend shifting the Metropolitan Grove Station to be closer to Maryland 124. But we've now said that 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 recommendation is really contingent on advancement of the red line extension. So it's not going to be worth kind of making this big investment in moving the station unless it's going to be a co-located station of the red line and Mark. So next slide, please. The next several slides talk a little bit about why we've routed the corridor connector on Montgomery Village Avenue or Maryland 124 instead of on Watkins Mill. So first, I just want to orient you on this map quickly. You can see in the bottom right corner that the north arrow points to the right. So on the screen, north is to the right. In the dark blue, we have the planned Maryland three fifty five BRT. And then in the light blue, we have the Lake Forest Montgomery Village Connector. And then in yellow, we show what it would look like if we were to to divert this to Watkins Mill. And so there's a few reasons why we focused on Montgomery Village Avenue for this, for this recommendation for the corridor connectors. First is we think that it's a great benefit to serve Lake Forest Mall directly, serving that existing land use and and you know, with that master plan, the potential for redevelopment in this area. Could you go to the next slide, please? We also want to make sure that we're serving existing transit riders. So here on the map, you can see commuters that take the bus in blue or the subway or metro in red. And there are far more blue and red dots clustered along the corridor connector than along Watkins Mills. So we see that we can really serve those who are taking transit today. Next slide, please. We also did a comparison relative to income and thinking about the equity impacts of Watkins Mill versus Montgomery Village. And so here you can see that the darker colored dots, I know it's a bit hard to see, but the darker colored dots represent lower income communities. And those tend to be a bit more clustered, also just a bit more dense along Montgomery Village. So if you go to the next slide, please. Lastly, on this front, we looked at households without vehicles. So each each pink dot represents a household without a vehicle. And so again, these are a bit more clustered along Montgomery Village Avenue than Watkins Mill. And so just kind of wanted to walk you through our thought process when identifying which road would be used as the corridor connector here. So next slide, please. So I know that we've walked through a lot of material through the past, I guess about forty minutes. We appreciate your patience, kind of listening to our presentation and we're looking forward to hearing your questions. I do just want to reiterate that the county council's public hearing will be on February fifteenth at seven thirty PM. And following that, there will be work sessions with the council's Transportation and Environment Committee. And so you can go to the next slide, please. And so that wraps it up. My email address as well as Patrick's are included on this slide. So we're happy, you know, if you have questions after tonight, feel free to follow up with us directly. But I know we have additional time now to to answer your questions. So thank you so much. And we look forward to hearing your feedback.
Thank you, Jesse and Patrick. Appreciate you guys. Appreciate all of you being here. We'll go through some questions from from the council and then we'll open it up to anybody from the public who'd like to speak and and then wrap it up. So I guess the first question I have is do the proposed three fifty five BRT dedicated lanes in this plan align with Montgomery County Department of Transportation's current design plans?
That's a really good question. And so I think the plan does not, if you look at the right of way plan in the table, the new changes in terms of what's master plan, it's specifically focused on the corridor connectors. So there are no changes from what's master plan for transit for the three fifty five BRT. Largely, they're the same because the three fifty five BRT what's master plan today has already gone through the process of review in two thousand thirteen. And then when we updated our master plan of highways and transit ways in two thousand eighteen, there were some technical changes as well to address the BRT slight differences that that things have moved in advanced in planning. And then recently, I think, I don't know the exact timeframe off the cuff, but maybe about a year ago, the three fifty five team from MCDOT brought a mandatory referral for the northern segment of the BRT, which is the really the only significant portion where there's deviation from what's master plan today. And it's a segment up in Clark'sburg where they're planning to put the buses on Snowden Farm Parkway instead of running it on through fifty five itself. But other than that, everything is essentially the same. And we continue to support MCDOT's efforts. We think they're doing a lot of great work to go ahead and advance that really important project.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to council members. I may have questions later, but I want to give everyone a chance. Neil Harris, did I do I see your hand? Go ahead, Neil.
Of course you do. Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for the presentation and the latest in a series of presentations. It's very informative and the evolution is looking very promising and I appreciate that. So I want to kind of walk through this in the order that you gave the presentation. So question on slide sixteen, where you went through briefly the hierarchy of transit modes. So this hierarchy from goes from local bus all the way up to commuter rail. And my expectation is that the hierarchy is based on the fact that the the items at the bottom of the chart are more are more have higher demand or more likely to be used by people if the option is available or something along those lines. Is that basically how this is structured or is there some other other formula for this?
I don't, I let me jump in, Patrick. This is, I don't think that's quite the way I would look at this. This is about the idea that different types of transit serve different purposes. So you know, if you think about the Long Island Railroad or Mark for that matter, those are commuter rail services that are not that are designed to get people from some outer location to a to an inner core where there are jobs and then back again at night. And Metro Rail was originally planned along those lines. As time has gone on, Metro Rail's evolved into a service that is designed to to function outside of regular business hours and it's designed to meet other needs other than just than just commuting. So if you think about the difference between like a frontage road and a limited access highway, for example, three fifty five serves a different purpose than I two seventy, even though they're both roadways that are parallel to each other. And these different types of transit, different types of services, different stop spacing, different ways in which they relate to the land use serve different functions. And that's qualitatively different. So the purpose that local bus or service fills, the need that fulfills is very different than what commuter rail or limited stop express bus service that could give you a one seat ride from Germantown to Tyson's Corner would serve. Does that make sense?
Sure. It's a little different than what I was expecting, but that's it makes it's fair. I mean, in almost twenty years ago, in business school economics class, we learned about the the fact that some some products are are less used by people as their income grows. And bus was one of the ones where the the more money you make, the less likely you are to ride a local bus. So I was just wondering if it was based on economics and of demand. So I think it's a little of both realistically. The reason I brought this one up, though, aside from this discussion, which was interesting, is the fact that the the Carter connectors reimagining from this original CCT project kind of moves the project from a BRT line to, I guess, a limited stop bus service. Is that basically the idea?
That is not the intent. So the idea is to create branches, if you will, that can be integrated into a service of dedicated bus lanes. So you can think about it, you could have multiple services at points in time using the same pieces of infrastructure, but at other points of time using exclusive infrastructure just for a particular service.
Consider it BRT or is it considered something else?
We would can, yeah, we would continue to consider it bus rapid transit. The definition that's generally accepted for bus rapid transit is fifty percent in dedicated lanes. You know, I think on a progressive progressive kind of standpoint, we tell you typically there's an expectation that BRT should run in dedicated lanes. But I know the way that the government that does the tracking for this sort of thing and the national transit database, they they use fifty percent as the sort of threshold.
I know the recommendation out of the National Capital Transportation Planning Board was dedicated guideways for BRT, which is why it was unclear because you know, the more you run it in mixed traffic, the less it looks like BRT, but that's fair. One point I'd like to bring out in your, so kind of a cause and effect question related to the travel patterns analysis you did. As a as someone who lives in Gaithersburg, I actually spent a year commuting to Reston, which is well outside of the forty five minute daily commute corridor unless you're commuting at three o'clock in the morning. It's about thirty five minutes at three AM, but normally it's it's probably more like ninety minutes of very painful commuting. So the question is are these these travel patterns that you've identified result of the fact that it's that there are no better ways to get anywhere. So you're not going to commute to Fairfax County because it's so painful and horrible that you just wouldn't want to subject yourself to it regardless of what the opportunities are. So you know, are we have we identified that the the fact that there may be economic opportunities outside of the area that's being studied and looking for ways to improve commuting there? Or are we strictly focused on kind of meeting the demand that exists today based on the circumstances today?
I can take this question. So first, I'll note that we were not limited to forty five minutes when we looked at the travel patterns. However, these travel patterns do come from the model and the model, like people, you know, often do make choices based on how long it's going to take them to get from point A to point B. So we do see that people prefer to take shorter trips when that's available to them. You know, we do acknowledge that there are people in Gaithersburg who need to commute to Reston. And as we acknowledged, you know, people from Gaithersburg who or maybe people in Frederick who need to commute to Gaithersburg. And and so I do also just want to acknowledge that what we found in our analysis is that the where you can get within forty five minutes of driving right now far exceeds where you can get within forty five minutes of transit. And so while we are thinking more broadly than just intra Montgomery County travel, we're also prioritizing some of those missing links within Montgomery County where we're seeing that the accessibility by auto just far exceeds what you can do by transit. But I do, you know, I do want to acknowledge your point that there are many people who who have some of those longer commutes as well.
All right, just a couple more questions or points that I'd like to make before I'll turn it over to my colleagues. One is I I want you to reassure me that the goal of of making transit more competitive in terms of travel time to automobiles isn't being achieved by by making it take longer to get where you're going by automobile. The concern is, of course, if you take away a lane on an existing roadway from automobiles and turn it into a dedicated transit lane, you could be increasing the time. And I think putting handicaps on other modes is is not my favorite approach, but I'm just curious where where you're going with all with that sort of concept.
It's not intended, it's not for the purpose of making auto travel more difficult or time consuming. It's a recognition that there's limited right of way. And that if there's a trade off to be made, that should be trade off should be resolved by reference to what is the most efficient use of the right of way? That is to say, how many people can get moved over a particular route in a particular amount of time. So it's not kick all, let's make life miserable for drivers because we want to make transit more attractive. It's we may want to repurpose the lane because you can actually serve more people by using dedicating that lane to transit than you could for for automobiles.
All right. So first of all, I'll say that it's already miserable enough taking an automobile around this region. But one of the reasons I actually brought that up is because in a in a presentation on the three fifty five BRT several years ago, it became clear that throughput was actually being reduced in some sections of the of the highway. Total throughput, including the new express bus service and then the BRT. So hopefully we're not prioritizing transit to the point where we're actually losing throughput all around. But I know that there's some reasons why we want to get people out of automobiles and and so forth, but hopefully that that won't be an issue. And so on the last point, segueing from what we were just discussing, I want to ask about Montgomery Village Avenue. Montgomery Village is a very heavily used road. And so how are we getting a dedicated bus lane there without really causing a lot of aggravation for the existing commuters? Are you really able to increase throughput by taking away some of the existing right of way?
So for the the purposes of clarity, we did not do traffic analyses with this master planning effort. That's something that typically would occur at the next phases of, you know, implementation. I think when you do that kind of study, you would find that and there there are some diversions, right? So the point that we heard previously from some in city staff, some at MCDOT was exactly the point that I think you're you're making Council Member Harris. But if it's such the case that there's capacity on other roads like Watkins Mill, some of the vehicle travel that, you know, could be absorbed by the transit facilities that would have otherwise been on Watkins Mill had that been a better option. Some cars will divert to start using that instead as an alternate path. I mean, one way to think about one way to think about a roadway network is to kind of visualize a series of pipes, right? And the water is going to start moving to the easiest path, right? And if something becomes constrained and things build up, water is going to start moving and searching for for a different path. But that all being said, I think it was tough, right? We knew we wanted to serve Lake Forest Mall. We had heard from the city of Gaithersburg that Lake Forest is is a priority for you all. Thinking about the best way to do it, we kind of looked at the data and that told us from an equity perspective where we should position facilities. When this moves into facility planning, that's probably when some decisions would be made about traffic impacts. If alternate routes or alignments need to be looked at, but from a higher master planning level, it seemed pretty clear to us from an equity perspective, based on all the dense clustering of folks without vehicles. And it made sense to look at one twenty four rather than Watkins Mill.
Just going to add briefly to that, that we did receive some comments about Montgomery Village Avenue from members of the planning board. And so we prepared some additional slides and images that show the right of way that we can share with you after this meeting. They weren't part of this presentation, but we have more that we can share on this front.
Okay, that's fair. I'll turn over the floor to whoever wants it now. Thank you very much for the presentation and for the answers.
Thank you, Neil. Who'd like to go next? Ryan and then Rob.
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks to all the presenters tonight. Good to have you with us and we appreciate all your good, hard work on this long iterative process. And the opportunity to be partners with you on it and have you join us tonight. I had a couple of questions. The the first is sort of more of a specific question. The second is more of sort of a larger big picture question. So I'll start with the 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 more specific one. Do you 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 presented this concept of, you know, corridor connectors. Do you have any examples from other communities of how these types of corridor connectors as an element of the larger plan work and how they hopefully are successful in other jurisdictions? I mean, separate and apart from the traditional transit modes and designs that we've already talked about. I'm particularly interested in this concept of corridor connectors.
I think one way to think about it is just to look and and probably that's the most relevant to to folks on the call. And in the region would be to look at our rail system and Wamata and kind of think about how that concept applies to bus. All right. When you think about the central core of DC, right, there are multiple lines that are using the same tracking at certain locations in the downtown area. You can think about this in the same way where there's some high demand locations in the county along the three fifty five quarter where you have multiple bus services using the same tracking, if you will, or guideway. In this case, it's dedicated bus lanes. It's a little bit different. But once they, you know, use that infrastructure, they are going off to branches where there's other points of demand. In terms of where this is done successfully for bus, honestly, the opportunities to talk about bus service for BRT in the United States are pretty limited today. The Health Line in Cleveland is it's one of the only options that really comes to mind. And that that's sort of the first phase of like a a BRT project that that was intended to serve a very urban area. But it's a great question. I think as as move as move through the council process, it's probably good to do a little bit more research to see if But it's a great question. I think as as move as move through the council process, it's probably good to do a little bit more research to see if we if there's any place where that it's kind of a concept has been applied before.
Yeah, I would just add, Patrick, this is Carrie Sanders. That the Route One BRT in Alexandria may be a helpful example to to look to that those are dedicated bus lanes. And it was implemented in a more incremental fashion where the Alexandria portion was implemented first and was relatively a smaller portion and it's been expanded into Arlington. But that 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 is a good local example of of dedicated bus lanes. And it's something that you can you can look toward.
Another point to make here is that the three fifty five service as it advances, it's actually not, you know, when people see three fifty five BRT, the general thought is that it's one really long bus line. But there's actually going to be a couple of different service patterns as it's planned today to move along that line. And so, you know, just thinking about where the bus is serving Shady Grove, for example, I know that's something that MCDOT has thought about different service patterns. Some are entering the station as it's currently moving through the process today, and some are not going all the way to the station, but just staying on three fifty five themselves. So there's different lines or service patterns, even three fifty five BRT that that sort of are being applied to the same infrastructure. But it is a really good question. I think maybe internationally, I know outside of the country, there are a lot of great places where we could start to look at how their BRT systems work. And I I sense that we might be able to find some relevant examples to kind of help explain the concept a little bit better.
Great, thank you. And then sort of moving on to my perhaps bigger picture question. I wanted to ask, you know, we're aware that the Maryland State Department of Transportation and the MTA recently released their draft statewide transit plan. And I'm just curious if you've put some thought into how the plan that you're working on aligns with or perhaps diverges from their 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 statewide plan. And whether you foresee recommending any changes that might take into account any of the statewide recommendations or whether you've had the opportunity to sort of fully digest it yet. And it's my understanding that the statewide transit plan seems to indicate that they will be deferential to or incorporate local plans such as corridor forward to help guide future state funding decisions. I'm just sort of trying to understand whether there are any potential conflicts with the statewide plan and and the corridor forward plan or opportunities for better alignment between the two, or if you have any other thoughts on sort of how the statewide plan comes into play.
Yeah, I can take this one. So the planning department did recently review the draft of the statewide transit plan and and generally we see a lot of our priorities reflected in what they have in their their recommendations. When it comes to Montgomery County, we see kind of three things that we talked about tonight. We see they they just define it as the Montgomery County Bus Rapid Transit Network. It's not kind of calling out three fifty five or Viersmore Road, but that's one of the the twenty five transit options that they include on their map of of projects that will be moving forward. They also have enhanced mark rail included as one of those projects, and then they have the corridor cities transit way. And so you know, I think that we want to, as as Patrick mentioned on a previous slide, you know, what we see as the corridor connectors is really a re-envisioning of the corridor cities transit way. So I think we obviously have additional conversations to have with MTA about that, but generally, you know, BRT, kind of what is the CCT become as we 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 re-envision it as the corridor cities transit way and enhanced mark rail are three kind of cornerstones for the Montgomery County Transit Network and the statewide plan. The plan doesn't really address anything related to Wamata. And so I don't think not including the red line, a red line extension is really an omission there because it's not really part of the the statewide network.
Thank you. We'll go to Rob Wu. And Jim right after Rob.
And thank you all for the presentation. It's always a pleasure to have you come forward to council. It's very appreciated. And so one of the questions I've got, it's kind of dovetailing off of something that Councilmember Harris was kind of seeking clarification on with respect to the the transition from the CCT, which was really envisioned as dedicated bus lanes with its own infrastructure. In some places, we saw conceptual of, you know, stations that almost look like metro stations. And I'm kind of getting the impression at least conceptually that the the connectors are going to be something less than that. So I'm I'm curious about, you know, when we had the CCT coming through, there's a lot of community involvement there because not only would you have impacts within right of way, state right of way, that we wouldn't have direct control over. Our residents would be concerned about the impacts of the adjacent. I'm sorry, my dog is reacting to something. The 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 impacts of adjacent areas that are within our planning jurisdiction or even infrastructure that may be associated with the infrastructure within the rights of way that would be within our jurisdiction. So I'm kind of curious as we as we re-envision from CCT to something else, what do you see as kind of the way that 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 the county level organizations are envisioned to work with, for example, the city of Gaithersburg, outreach to communities, things like that?
It's similar to the three fifty five BRT process that's that's advanced. They would, you know, I I think MCDOT does a really good job engaging communities and they would most likely come to Rockville and Gaithersburg really early on in the process. One of the things that I want to kind of go back to in the presentation a little bit is is forty three percent of the original planned guideway infrastructure for the CCT is retained in the corridor connectors. And that big chunk that's missing, again, is a is a portion that goes through environmental land or environmental resources that doesn't really provide any access, right? I don't think it's the intent of the plan to water down the quality of the service, right? If you look at the right of way table, it says the preferred number of lanes remains of dedicated lanes remains two in all locations. But having that preferred word in there, I think opens up the door for a little bit of flexibility for our partners on the implementation side to kind of look at how they can move the ball forward. I know you can see this with most of their BRT projects, they've kind of advanced to date. Ideally, you know, the planning board or the planning department, I think we'd love to see everything immediately in a dedicated lane. And sometimes on the implementation side, that's just not immediately feasible, although the the long term goal does remain to to get the buses in the dedicated lanes. I know from the perspective of this plan, that's that's the priority here is to get the dedicated lanes. We heard a lot of feedback to that on that from not only the city of Gaithersburg, but also the Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber of Commerce as well. They they provided some great testimony to that effect. And so the intent here is not to water the CCT down in any way. It's to make it a little bit more buildable. But we would expect that the quality of the stations would be the same for any other BRT service that we would bring online in the county. I think the stuff that's gone up on twenty nine in terms of like the station platforms and things like that, they're pretty high quality. If you had a chance to to take a ride on it, they look really nice. It's an attractive service. The buses are attractive. So I think from a branding standpoint, the county is doing a pretty good job of moving that forward. And we we hope that you know, the same would be true up here in in the Great Seneca area. To your point about other service like the Great Seneca Transit Network that I talked about earlier, that probably, and I don't think it's fully fleshed out what MCDOT wants to do with that kind of a service yet, but I don't think that's intended to be a fully branded BRT, right? I think it's it's a little bit different in that it's not intended to to really run in in dedicated lanes, except in highlighted portions and components of the network, whereas what we're proposing is dedicated lanes. That's like the sort of the the main selling point of the quarter connectors is that quick, easy access. So, you know, from from a it's a balance, right? From a planning department prioritization perspective, yes, the plan advocates for and it's master planning dedicated lanes. When this moves into facility planning, there's always a little bit of flexibility for for our partners on the implementation side.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Second question. With with respect to, I guess, the 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 funding, I think last time we had a conversation, there's some questions that we asked about prioritization and the fiscal realities and that may be baked into or not baked into, for that matter, the kind of the prioritizations that's coming from this planning document. I I I I get that, you know, there's going to be a handoff from the planning from this conceptual design to the implementing agencies that would ultimately seek funding. Some projects, for example, you know, red line, you can envision possibly federal funding coming in. Others are more regional, you know, whether you get state funding or it becomes a purely county play as far as as a transit project. And so question, with respect to the prioritization of the projects that were presented here today, was there any additional consideration as to, you know, funding sources? The likelihood of funding, the risks associated with it with respect to the prioritization? And then at what point in the process after this, do we kind of get that aspect of it? Because we do have you're hearing Gaithersburg, we have planning jurisdiction, we've been planning mixed use communities around planned transit or or potential transit. My community is one of them where we, you know, looking here tonight at Metropolitan Grove, you know, we had a CCT running through our community that now doesn't appear to be in the offing. So I'm curious, you know, speaking as part of a jurisdiction that has to make plans around the 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 future transit nodes, I I interested in some clarity as to kind of the process for ultimately solidifying what's going to be on the table.
Well, that is the sixty four thousand dollar question because I think Patrick mentioned during the presentation the commitment of the state for the three hundred and sixty million is, you know, Greg Slater had characterized that to me on a couple of occasions as not the upper limit of the state's commitment to transit projects that would be funded. But rather, that was the amount of money that would come directly from the toll revenue, which is a different question. Now, Greg has, you know, moved on to, you know, someplace where there's palm trees and autonomous vehicles. So I don't know. The question now is, what will a future M dot SHA under not just this gubernatorial regime, but you know, the next one, how will they view their willingness to commit to make these state projects? And that that is the CCT or whatever is we want to call these corridor connectors and BRT thirty five. We certainly would argue that they should be state projects. And that's where we're going to have, I think, some pushing and pulling. And I think that's just the the political problem to be to be resolved. Extension of the red line, I think, is a different story, but I think the that the crucial question right now is, to what degree can we get the state to commit to make this this reimagined CCT and or BRT three fifty five? Not only something that toll revenue from managed lanes will contribute to achieving those projects, but to integrate those into the state's trans, you know, capital program for state projects as opposed to saying, well, here's our contribution. Now, county, go ahead and do your thing. Good luck to you.
Okay, thanks, Casey. I I won't touch the I guess, the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room about whether any of these projects would be going forward without funding associated with the roads project on IT seventy. So I'll ask a selfish question to kind of conclude this. And as I mentioned, my neighborhood is metropolitan is adjacent to the Metropolitan Grove Mark Station with the plans to move eventually and recognize contingent on the red line expansion, the Metropolitan Grove Mark Station up the street. You know, again, as a planning jurisdiction, there were certain considerations made, you know, probably well before I was on council as to the placement of transit oriented communities around transit nodes that are now moving. And so I was wondering, you know, is there flexibility perhaps in the consideration of, you know, I guess, within within the area, maintaining the integrity of the planned transit routes, but flexibility with respect to the the location, the amenities surrounding the the infrastructure at the stops where, you know, I'm guessing Mark is going to meet the red line is going to meet a bus bus route.
Well, I'll let the team talk about the specifics of the last part of your question. But I think something we didn't really talk about in the main presentation, it's really important to understand, is that the CCT's alignment assumed a lot, as I said at the very beginning, and that when we were introducing this presentation, made certain assumptions about real estate development as part of the Great Seneca Science Corps Master Plan. Some of that concerned Johns Hopkins, some of it concerned other properties in the area. What we've seen is, you know, there's sort of bad news and good news. The bad news is that obviously Hopkins has not followed through with some of what they advertised, to be blunt. The good news is that we have seen development applications proceeding in this area to the point where we actually had to get the county council to adopt a minor master plan amendment just to increase capacity for some life sciences tenants that want to build life sciences, lab space, office space, et cetera, in that in that area. But even though development is proceeding in that area, it's not proceeding at the intensity on the scale and the scope that was originally contemplated. And there and that's one of the reasons why this plan really has to be done. It's because the premises in terms of land use, not just will this land be developed? Yes, it will be developed, but the question is, you know, at what scale, at what intensity? And so part of the point of this plan is to rethink the CCT in light of the reality of where the real estate market has taken things on these properties that were originally intended to be served by by the CCT. And I think Patrick and the gang can maybe fill in some of the specifics on the last part.
Yeah, sure. In regard to Metropolitan Grove, you know, we got some really good feedback from from City Gaithersburg and a good reminder too that you know, we went ahead and did the technical analysis for the red line extension and two of the stops that we studied are within the city of Gaithersburg. And that the reason is, it's just because between point A and and point B, Shady Grove and Germantown, there's Gaithersburg. And you guys have a lot of great things that that we think should be, you know, served because it's a great community. Yet at the same time, there's, we don't have the planning authority to recommend stop locations. And we also acknowledge that, you know, when these really large transportation projects go through the necessary processes to move forward, it's NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, they're required to do, it's called an alternative analysis where they look at different ways to, you know, move the project forward, different alignments, and also no build scenarios, for example, to compare like whether or not the ultimate project really would have benefits against a no build scenario. But in those types of scenarios, they do look at things like alternate stop locations. So, you know, as if if and when a red line extension were to move forward, I'm sure that whoever managing that project will probably be looking at different stop locations. And maybe it could be the case that Metropolitan Grove could be considered. In terms of the rationale for why we studied the location that we we studied, you can think back to, oh, gosh, five or six, about longer than that now, probably, a number of years ago when the purple line was advancing, right? And there is this big question at the time about how everything at Silver Spring was going to mix together, right? The mark service that's there, the red line service that's there, as well as other bus services in the transit center. And so there's this, there's a sense that, you know, there's a lot going on there and perhaps we did not do the best job kind of integrating all these services together in an easy, convenient way. And one of the challenges is because, you know, the red lines stop exists, the mark line infrastructure is already there and it's it's challenging to kind of reorient everything to fit together, right? And there were some value engineering that was done to to kind of help move the purple line forward. But on the flip side, unfortunately, the the convenience of transfer was not quite as good. Why we looked at one twenty four rather than Metropolitan Grove is that we were looking at the best way to move the corridor connector in a quick efficient way over Lake Forest Mall and up to Montgomery Village. And from our perspective, it made sense to do that on one twenty four rather than divert up into Montgomery or Metropolitan Grove and then divert back down and move forward. That was just a planning decision that that we made. But in order to integrate all these other services, it made sense to us to kind of start anew and think about ways where we can make sure we could have a a really integrated transit hub. That being said, I mean, that's that's really high level thinking, right? I don't want that to kind of overshadow the fact that when these things move through engineering, once they get there, it's likely the case that there is going to be significant number of changes as compared to what was actually studied initially through this plan. And, you know, I'd encourage you, if if and when the red line were to move forward, you know, stay involved and to advocate for what you think would be best for the city. If if it's a having stop location at Metropolitan Grove proper rather than a little bit further south, and then there, you know, are ways to advocate and achieve that once a little bit further south, and then there, you know, are ways to advocate and achieve that once that project starts to get a little bit of steam and and rolling forward.
And if I could jump in real quick to answer your question, Councilman Wu, I think the other thing to keep in mind is with this plan, part of our goal is to actually gather all of the stakeholders, including the city of Gaithersburg, obviously the county council and all of our partners to have this prioritized list that then makes the funding hopefully come more quickly because it is it is more clear what the county wants. And so this is, this is not a new model. This is something that frankly, in Northern Virginia, where I worked for many years, was done through the state of Virginia through the Smart Scale Program. And when I worked in the city of Alexandria, Alexandria, the Potomac Yard Metro Way was was one of the top projects on Northern Virginia's list. And sure enough, that project did get funded. So I think having a very clear direction from the municipalities and from the county, I think is very helpful. Because it really then when the funding becomes available, whether that's through a managed lanes project, which is the case in many of them, Virginia Transit Funding, or it could be a grant such as through the infrastructure bill. So I think many steps follow this, but the the big step that we're really aiming for is the focus to actually then get the funding. And then the design and all the engagement that needs to go into the actual design of the project needs to happen with the community at a very granular level level that happens after this. So.
All right. Thank you. We're going to go to Jim McNulty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and nice to meet you all. The last time you were here, I was still a member of the public listening in and and getting my three minutes to ask questions. And I appreciate all the time that's gone into this. I'd like to to talk a little bit more about the the cost benefit analysis that's been done between Metro and Mark. Particularly the assumptions being made about needing 45 miles of of rail in order to to implement and enhance Mark. I happened to be on Twitter on January 17th and Maryland Transit Opportunities Coalition was live tweeting the the Transportation Appropriation Committee's meeting in the House of Delegates. And one of the things they tweeted really kind of caught my eye and a number of other people were said that MTA was talking to CSX quote, for the first time about what it would be needed to expand Mark on the Brunswick line. And it was the for the first time that really caught my ear and concerned me. And I'm wondering how we've been able to do this level of of investigation on the county side if we really haven't made the ask of CSX to understand, you know, what we could do with the existing tracks versus having to put in 45 miles of new rail. Could you talk a little bit about that process?
Yeah, I can start us off. I first want to say that we did not do like a formal cost benefit analysis. I mean, some of those comparisons that you saw were kind of one discrete benefit to one to to the overall cost. But the Federal Transit Administration has a process by which you do a cost benefit analysis. And while we did some kind of similar analyses as part of this, we didn't do a formal cost benefit analysis. But to your note about MTA, we have not coordinated directly with CSX as part of this project, but we have spoken with MTA. And you may know that they are kicking off a study of the Brunswick line. So I imagine that's part of why they are coordinating with CSX at this time. But I do want to note that we we sent a handful of questions to MTA that about kind of what's within the scope of the Brunswick line study that they're doing and what do they anticipate will come out of that study? And with regards to CSX, and so I can just share a little bit about what we've heard from them. So some of the the improvements that they are looking at include midday service, like what we analyze, some limited weekend service and the addition of one train in the morning and afternoon hours. But the priority order and implementation of these will be really dependent on rail capacity. So you may know that the real challenge along this corridor is is that this is a major freight corridor. So it's not just that it's owned by CSX, but the the demands of freight along the corridor make it such that there's limited opportunities for passenger rail. There's also been some talk, I don't know if it was in that appropriations committee as well, about whether or not Mark could turn around midline. So maybe it just ran from Union Station to Gaithersburg and turned around or something like that. But what we heard from MTA is that due to operational constraints, it's it's unlikely that Mark would be able to turn around midline. So we really would be needing to look at improvements for the extent of the corridor rather than just one section. And and we also heard from MTA that it is quote, very likely that the host railroad CSX would continue to own and maintain any new rail infrastructure along its main line. And so what we've really heard so far is that it's likely that CSX will continue to own the line and that given the freight demands, it's unlikely that additional passenger service would be feasible without a new mainline track. So I don't know if anyone else in our team wants to to add to that.
Yeah, I would just add that that the folks over at MTA have been a really helpful partner to us throughout the process. You know, they do, they provide a really great service. I know folks in Gaithersburg love Mark. I rode Mark for a while on my commute. It's a great service. They do a good job. And for that reason, I think so many people want to see it enhanced. And there are a number of opportunities that that could be pursued with Mark and there are some constraints as well, just like the red line extension that that would be significant challenges. If you're familiar with the 2018 cornerstone plan that they have, they kind of, you know, if you talk to their staff about it, they kind of tell you, we wrote that plan in a way to help people understand the constraints. So there's a real understanding of like a realistic attitude about how long some of these chunks of infrastructure would take to achieve and, you know, the steps along the way that that it would take to get there. One of the thing things that's kind of struck me throughout this process, and and this might be a little too candid on my end, but to say, our transit advocates are really excited about the potential of Mark. And that's, I think everyone is, right? It's a great service. But one thing that I think we have to be careful on as planning staff is to say, you know, if we're getting comments from Mark and they're not willing to make a commitment about what's possible and they've done work previously that kind of already lays out the challenges. I don't think we as planning staff are really equipped to kind of suggest that they are wrong. And I think we've heard some, some of our transit advocates kind of suggest that, like that that MTA is, you know, needs to reassess some of its assumptions and rethink about what it can do differently. They're working really hard with their Brunswick line project to kind of make sure that they address some of the comments and think about the potential of for the future of the Brunswick line. And we're really looking forward to seeing what they come up with. I think unfortunately, that the way this project quarter forward has has kind of moved forward in a in a time frame, it would have been helpful to kind of have that Brunswick plan already, you know, like the outcomes of it informed with the work that we're doing. But it's just not the case this time around. But I only make that comment to say that, you know, I think I have a lot of respect and I know we all have a lot of respect for the work that MTA is doing and we're looking forward to their work coming out. We don't want to sort of make any kind of assumptions yet on our end about what the potential for Mark could be, is sort of an incremental potential could be without having them fully understand and and kind of provide that guidance.
I'm glad you mentioned the, you know, incremental change because, you know, even just seeing the work that you've done for the the corridor connections and and I think removing, you know, that section B on, I think it was page, maybe 17 of the pack, or see page 20 of the packet, where there weren't going to be any stops that make sense. But if you also look, you know, that's an opportunity to leverage the mark instead of, you know, having to send folks over to the BRT. In general, I think a lot of these BRT networks work better with a two way all day mark. It it just gives you that that flexibility and that efficiency, you know, we keep talking about how you know, people will start using, you know, public transportation more when it gets where they need to go as quickly as they need to get there. And I, you know, I know a lot of the numbers, the the comparison between the mark and the red line were based on the single seat trips. And I know with bus travel, most of those I can imagine are not going to be single seat trips. So you know, having that ability to to transfer at the Rockville Station to Metro, I think, you know, expands that reach that Mark could have. I understand the 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 preferential nature of a single trip. I certainly tried to prioritize if I'm taking public transportation, a a single seat trip. But in looking at the especially, you know, you acknowledged the the higher cost to the city of Gaithersburg specifically with the red line versus the mark. I am, I love the idea of the metro in Gaithersburg. I absolutely do. I think it could be transformational, as could enhance Mark, Metro versus Mark here in Old Town. It's the it's the cost in in the historic buildings. It's the cost in taking people's homes. It's the cost in small businesses. That really, really concerns me if we're not willing to advocate for a tunnel, you know, and we that I was the person who brought that up in the the last hearing, understanding the cost. But knowing where, you know, Metro in the other downtown areas, you know, in Arlington, in DC, where it is underground and the ability that that creates from an economic development standpoint, and being able to preserve our history. You know, if there is an opportunity to do that, I think that is the way to go. And just thinking about it from a CSX standpoint as well, I know that they have wanted to be able to have taller rail cars and they're obstructed by the Humpback Bridge in Washington Grove. Maybe we can put them both in the tunnel. I don't know. Any of these projects is going to cost an exorbitant amount of money. But I think we really need to understand, you know, was it 62 feet along the southbound tracks? I mean, you know, that takes out the crossings that I think that brings it right on the doorstep of the Wells Robertson House. It takes out, you know, homes all along the the corridor. Those are real concerns with our, you know, where Gaithersburg started. And I don't think we can just say, you know, well, we'll worry about it later. Like, it's a real concern.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to minimize the concern because I I do know, you know, Gaithersburg has has immense historic character associated with it, as does Washington Grove as well. I mean, they're both gems in the county. And I think unfortunately, it's not going to be a satisfying answer, but this is one of the answers is that when these projects get enough, if and when these projects get enough steam to move forward, both red line or Mark, any kind of infrastructure would have to go through a process and look at how to mitigate historic impacts. And so in terms of what kinds of things are done, sometimes alternate alignments are looked at. Sometimes things like tunnels are looked at. Even, you know, I know projects as far south as one I I was looking at a couple of months ago in New Orleans where they moved a building. So there are different ways to tackle these sorts of issues. It all comes down to what the will is in terms of how to, you know, how to best mitigate and from a cost perspective, how to best mitigate. And if it still makes sense to the project, if, you know, mitigation becomes cost prohibitive, things like that are all factors that go in into sort of moving a project forward. I I say this just because I think, you know, the desktop analysis that we did is is helpful from like a high level. But in terms of being a reliable source of information about impacts for both Mark and red line, my sense would be that most of that, most of that could change, right? Based on where the alignment of these things would be. And so that that's just something to keep in mind. And you know, during the planning processes and and national process or the NEPA process process to kind of move these larger projects forward, you would have these sorts of built in safeguards to avoid impacts like that.
And if I could just add to briefly to what Patrick mentioned. Look, we you'll see from our supporting recommendations very much support Mark. But when we looked at the the data, we were really seeing more more ridership and more VNT reduced with with red line option. The the other thing I did want to mention to make sure that everybody was clear about, it's there is still going to be large impacts if Mark was expanded because we would have to add another rail. And as our, we understand from our partners at the state that 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 would actually, that track would actually have to go all the way from Frederick all the way down into DC in order for Mark service to be improved. And so it's a really large piece of infrastructure that infrastructure that would need to be funded and would have impacts too. So just want to make sure I I'm clear about that because I do. I do think sometimes it's confusing because I think there is an idea out there that we could, you know, add more trains to the existing Mark service, but that as we understand from the state is not an option, we would have to add another track to do that. So that being said, I I want to make sure that it's very clear that we 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 also support Mark and we think it's important. But as we went through the analysis, we were seeing that the red line performed better on other metrics.
That's all I have. Thank you, man.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Any other questions before we go to the public? Neil Harris.
Yeah, I was going to hold off on this one, but I'm just curious. It's a little bit of a financial technical question, so I apologize. But when you were doing the cost benefit of these projects, I'm curious what cost you were using because there's a number of ways you can look at cost. You can look at the construction cost or the capital cost for the project. Or you can add in the operating cost in total or the subsidized version piece of the operating cost. In other words, what it costs the public, public financing versus, you know, minus the fair revenue. So I'm just curious how you were looking at the the cost for these projects.
I can, I can start and then Jesse, if you have any other additional comments on this one. So I want to be clear, we did do a comparative cost benefit index at the beginning of the project. We did use the term cost benefit analysis as sort of the project advanced. We were working with MCDOT and kind of reframed the language around that because there are specific guidelines that the federal government uses when it kind of makes funding decisions about how to do a cost benefit analysis. And our analysis didn't account for everything on the benefit side, particularly which is rise in property values, things like that. As well as some other elements as well, that's pretty technical. So I'm not going to get into it here, but I just want to be clear because I think some of the metrics that you saw initially in other presentations, we've de-emphasized a little bit to focus just on the sheer capital cost, the sheer operating costs of the services, because it's easier for folks to kind of absorb those things. But Councilmember Harris, to your point, those initial financial analyses did look at operating costs, capital costs, renewal costs over a 60 year horizon with the appropriate discount rates applied. But again, if you look at the appendix three or transportation cross appendix and the addendum to it, you can kind of see a better idea about the cost range of both the red line extension and the quarter connectors. It's it provides some more information in there about the sort of a range of what you might be able to anticipate with each of those different projects.
All right. Well, I will, you know, I know I asked a technical question, but I want to say I've looked at a lot of transportation plans in the seven plus years I've been on the council and a member of the TPB. It's really the first time I've seen significant cost benefit analysis on these projects. So I want to commend you for that. I think it's it's about time that we actually looked at at this to make sure that we're getting the most for our money. So that's great.
Thank you. We appreciate that. It was it was certainly new for us and we we learned a lot along the way about how to approach costs. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we go to the public? Okay, not seeing any, then this is the time in the mayor council like to hear from anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this topic. We ask that you state your name and address or neighborhood for the record. Keep your comments no more than three minutes. If you have anything beyond that, then feel free to submit to us in writing. I I see the members of the public who are who are still with us know how to operate Zoom or whatever. Use the Zoom raise hand function if you'd like to speak. Tech team, if you could bring up David Bellegarde, please. Dave, when you, when you come up, unmute yourself, state your name, address or neighborhood, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Dave Bellegarde, Washington, Toney Woods. First of all, I'd like to say that that I have been following this closely in a lot of the presentations and as you recognized during your presentation, you've had some difficulty, I think, with the graphics kind of explaining your constant and and this presentation, I I think achieved that much better. I really just have one question, which is, which has to do with the unbranded, what you what used to be the CCT, but that new unbranded service. It seems to me like it's kind of like the idea of building like a pipe network for 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 water service, but not serving the water and hoping that other companies will serve the water into that network. And I may misunderstand, but that's what it kind of sounded like to me. So with that, I guess my concern is that without a plan to bring service into that network, it may take a long time for 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 adoption. And I I I hope that they And I, I I hope that that your team, if it is your responsibility or the next team, you know, makes that a significant consideration on how to ensure that there's going to be quick adoption of that unbranded service. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. And are there any other speakers for the public? Going once, going twice? Okay, tech team, if you could bring up Mike Sesma, please. And Mike, state your name, address or neighborhood, go right ahead.
Good evening. Mike Sesma, West Riding and former member of this council. So I was on the DAS, the virtual DAS, the last time we heard from this group. This, this presentation was a little bit better graphically. I think the headlines will probably focus on the the plans to expand the red line, but I think the real discussion here has been about the CCT or what's left of it. I guess there was a comment earlier that the corridor connectors are not meant to water down the CCT. And I would agree, it seems like the corridor connectors are actually meant to drown the CCT because there's not not much left of it. The CCT, when it was, I was conceived a long time ago, but when communities were approved, development, large residential, mixed-use communities were approved, they were approved as transit-oriented projects that would anchor within Gaithersburg, the CCT. One was Crown Farm, the southernmost one. The CCT would pass through Kentlands, Lakelands, Quince Orchard Park, Astra Zenica, which was then Metamune, and then go to Metropolitan Grove where Parklands was being developed. Now you've basically removed two of those transit-oriented projects or communities which are well underway to being developed and and growing to capacity. You remove those from what was left of the CCT. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I think what's, what's likely to happen is when we look at these corridor connectors that look like a limited stop neighborhood route, those, it's not going to encourage people to leave their automobiles and and go to to transit, whether we call it BRT or not, we reference it that way. So that's my biggest concern is the commitment to transit-oriented development that the city made over the years, much of that when I was on the council and before I was on the council. I'm, I'm, I'm very sorry to see that let go. And then with respect to development that that Mr. Anderson talked about in terms of the Hopkins property and and adjacent areas, remember, a lot of that development was supposed to be triggered by full funding of the CCT. Since that never happened, that, that's more or less delayed development of that science center there. So those are a lot of things to think about. There's a lot more stuff I could have brought up, but I want to thank you for the presentation. You you clearly made a little progress here and it's good to see some more of the details so we can understand better what we're losing and what we might gain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. And I don't see anybody else in the public here, so I'm going to allow Patrick and Carrie and Jesse, if you guys want to address the questions both related to the the CCT, I'll leave it to you.
Jesse, you want to take this first or would you like me to?
Sure, I can kick us off. So I think the first question was really asking why we were focusing on infrastructure and not service. You know, why were we building the pipes but not thinking about the water going through it? And so I think part of this is about our role as the planning department versus the role of MCT, MCDOT as the operator of transit service. So that's part of why, you know, we're thinking about what's the right of way that's needed, what physically would be put on the ground as as part of these corridor connectors, whereas MCDOT operates right on and would be thinking about, you know, what is the service that runs in these lanes? How would we develop service patterns that, you know, divert to Maryland 355 or Viola Mill Road, et cetera? Also, as Patrick discussed, when we were running through the slides, we anticipate that some service on these corridor connectors could be through the state's run commuter bus service. So again, you know, not really within the purview of what we can do as the planning department, but we're trying to lay the groundwork for where that service could be most effective, thinking about, you know, both land use and transportation. The the second question that we received about the CCT, you know, we've seen that the CCT has not advanced for a variety of reasons over the past several decades. It's kind of stalled at the thirty percent design and really hasn't advanced through, like, there has not been additional funding in the state's budget to to move the project forward. And so part of what we were tasked with with corridor forward was to say, well, how can we get creative and and make a project that can be implemented, that people want to implement? And so as was presented through our slides, you know, we're really thinking about ways that we can make this more buildable, removing some of the higher cost elements of the CCT and making it something that could be implemented incrementally to to re-envision the CCT that still serves many of the same communities, but we can actually get those lanes on the ground. So I think there are a few other things that may have been asked. I'll pass it to Patrick or Carrie if you want to add to that.
I was just going to add one thing, which is it is not a limited bus stop. I think that was the the question, whether we were proposing just a regular service. Dedicated bus lanes would necessitate a high level of service by the very fact that they're dedicated lanes. And I also believe that the alignment that we're showing complements the MCDOT Great Seneca Science Corridor project. Apologize, I think I just incorrectly stated the name of that project, so feel free to correct me, Jesse. It's late at night and I apologize. So that project, actually, I think, the the MCDOT project, which is not necessarily always in dedicated lanes, as I understand, there are portions in mixed traffic. That project, I do believe, does a good job at synergizing with the project that we are proposing so that we really have robust coverage of Gaithersburg. But I do want to make it clear that the corridor connectors is a dedicated bus lane. That is what we're proposing. So by the very nature of that, it would be a higher quality of service. Lastly, I think it's important to note that making it more buildable and efficient will actually make the service much better. The original alignment was very strong, but did have some circuitous elements to it that most transportation planners would sort of want to straighten naturally. So I I believe that the the new alignment that we're proposing or the the re-envisioning of it, many of the old elements are still retained, but it it straightens it, makes it more efficient, and I do believe will make it a better service.
All right. Appreciate, appreciate that. And I'm not, you know, in terms of the question of aligning it, serving transit, what we developed here in Gaithersburg is transit oriented communities is not necessarily something that you guys consider as much, which is unfortunate. There's a disconnect. That's kind of a question in the form of a statement.
Yeah, I I want to kind of take a, take another crack at recommend or noting that there's a lot going on in Great Seneca and the Great Seneca vicinity in terms of recommendations for transit between the corridor connectors that are proposed and our plan. And you pair that with the Great Seneca Transit Network, which is a high-quality bus network, which, you know, frankly, there are opportunities to improve that further by looking at places where you guys have done a great job getting that right away constructed with the space to get dedicated lanes. There's opportunities to look at how that is a beneficial component. But if you take those two things together and compare it to the the heft of recommendations for places that are relatively dense down county, it's comparable with different levels of density that exist today, at least. So I I guess I kind of want to be clear about that in the sense that I think, I think that this area, while we may have reimagined the CCT a little bit, there's quite a bit that's being recommended and quite a lot of advantage and potential funding that could be flowing into this area. And I think that that's a really good thing for Great Seneca and Gaithersburg and Rockville and places up county like Montgomery Village and Clarksville as well. So I just, I think it's important to keep that context in mind when you compare what's master planned through this effort and what's ongoing with MCDOT and compare it to other places in county. There's, there's quite a bit of investment that's being considered for this area. And I, I think that's an important lens to kind of to keep in mind.
Thanks for giving us that context. So for, in terms of our staff, is there, I'm, I'm assuming we, you're not looking for any particular guidance, more from the council, Dennis, am I correct?
So just based on your comments, tonight's staff will be drafting comments for the county council version public hearings on the corridor forward plan. We'll do that under kind of your name there and then send that to concurrence for the council as our standard kind of procedure. So we'll take your feedback tonight. I will turn that into comments to provide to the county council and then we'll reconfirm those as concurrents before we send them out to the county council. I I will note one thing that's come up, partly as part of the presentation, it was noted that the county council is also looking for feedback regarding the managed lanes or OP lanes on how that three hundred and sixty million would be spent at their February fifteenth meeting. The county, county exec has also issued their draft CIP budget and three fifty-five BRT is in that budget and is looking at using some of those funds from the OP managed lanes along with the potential for federal grant funding to try and secure that in a fairly short time period. Staff will be working on providing some comments back to the council on the executive CIP budget. Tom and I are working on that now, and so that will be coming in the next few weeks too, because those public hearing items are for February eighth and ninth on the CIP.
Great. Mayor, just to follow up on Dennis's statement related to the county executive's budget. In conversations with my friends at MCDOT, what is being shown in the CIP is the first phase. So essentially, it is through the city of Gaithersburg down to Rockville. It's not the entire length. So they are phasing this project and it is being shown in the six-year construction CIP.
Thank you for that, Rob. Okay, so so we'll look for those drafts from you guys. And I want to say thank you to everybody from Montgomery Planning. Appreciate that this has gone late, so so definitely appreciate your time and the in-depth explanations and patience with our questions. We appreciate you guys and all the work that you put into this plan. Thanks for being with us. And with that, I'll remind everybody, we have a work session next week, a joint discussion of our, our, our most recent election and as well as direction moving forward to the next city election. That will be on Monday, January thirty-first, seven thirty PM. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.